Good evening and welcome to the Millis School Committee meeting for June 20. I want to welcome everyone for coming tonight. In my three years of being on the school committee, this is by far the largest audience we've had, so welcome everybody. Thanks for bearing with us with the heat and we'll try and keep ourselves moving. I know we're all excited to see what's ahead for us tonight, starting with you guys. We have a couple of items of business to do before we get to the children. First, I'll start with a roll call vote. Ms. Roach?
President.
Mr. Carnloy?
Here.
Superintendent?
Here.
Mr. Catalano?
Present.
Ms. Sol will be absent tonight. No student or teacher representatives. Jody, do we have anybody signed in for open session?
Audrey Nolan, who's doing the CPAC presentation tonight, signed in at open session. I don't think that this necessarily should be done.
Unless she wants to have some commentary, a session, a comment right now, otherwise we can just defer to when CPAC does the presentation.
Yeah, no, I just signed in with her.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. I'll start by announcing the meeting's being recorded and can be viewed on Mondays at 7:00 PM on Comcast Channel 8 or Verizon Channel 13.
37.
37, thank you. We'll start with a couple of action items. I'll take a motion to approve the 6-6-17 school committee meeting minutes.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Catalano?
I make a motion to approve the school committee meeting minutes from June 6, 2017.
Second.
The movement seconded to approve the 6-16-6-6-17 school committee meeting minutes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. We also have a consideration to accept the FY '18 budget of $14,80273.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Catalano?
I make a motion to accept the FY '18 school budget in the amount of $14,80273, salaries being $12,27986, and expenses being $2,529,287, for a total of $14,80273.
Second.
The movement seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Next up, we have a consideration to approve a reduction in fees for our Millis Youth Baseball Babe Ruth League. If we could ask Adam Hill, go up to the front, please. Anywhere you want. Any open chair.
Great. Thanks. I want to introduce myself and just explain. So, I'm Adam Hill. I'm the president of Millis Youth Baseball. I'm also the senior director of Millis Youth Baseball. I've been working closely with Coach Carter, the varsity baseball coach, and we've formed a senior Babe Ruth summer team. It consists of majority varsity and junior varsity baseball players, and we'd like to ask for your permission to use the varsity field for that team. Approximately 10 games, we'd love for you to consider to waive the fee. And, you know, in return, Millis Youth Baseball is willing to contribute $250 towards those 10 games and an additional $300 towards when the field needs to be edged, either in late fall or in early spring. We're trying, we're doing our best to keep the baseball interest alive with the kids. It's, you know, it's tough to compete with soccer and all the other sports. We're trying to keep baseball relevant and, you know, develop the whole program. So, I think Coach Carter's doing a great job.
Any questions?
Madam Chair. Does reducing the fee or not charging a fee enable us to not charge the students? Is there normally, is there normally a fee for them to play summer baseball?
Yeah, there's a fee. We have to pay for umpires, uniforms, baseballs, and all the other, you know, maintenance sites that go into it. So, we're basically breaking even. It's a nonprofit.
So, by not charging the fee, for us not charging a fee, do we keep that fee down for the, for the kids?
It's pretty much a wash, the, the fee that gets charged. So, it's like a break even. The kids have already paid. They've paid for the umpires, they've paid for everything, and then... We never pay a fee for fields typically. We usually, we pay, all our costs are for opening the fields in the spring. We use the town park, senior diamond. We, basically, our, our budget is $16,000 a year we pay to maintain and open fields in the spring. So...
Okay.
So, this is something new you guys are doing this year?
We've done it actually the past two years. We've had the senior teams. We've used the field the past two years free of, free of charge.
Okay.
Madam Chair. I make a motion to waive the field usage fee for the Millis Youth Baseball Senior Baseball Babe Ruth Summer League for 2017, noting that they are going to contribute in kind $350 for field maintenance and materials.
Second.
Take, take all of the numbers on there. Can you extend the motion for them?
$550.
$500.
Oh, yeah.
What did I say?
Did I say $500?
$350.
$350, I'm sorry.
We got it. The movement seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hill. Appreciate it.
Thank you. With no student and teacher representatives, we move to time of end.
Please stand.
Aye.
Mark.
So, Mrs. Grant Chelly, are we ready? Or do you need a couple more minutes? Mrs. Lane, can you come just get your cooking back up and then I'll kind of...
I can do some math. Do some more math.
Okay, so, I'm Cat Grant Chelly. I think I've met most of you before. I'm a technology integration specialist at Clyde Brown, and many of our students have been busy all year, kind of personalizing their learning through the support technology. So, you're going to sit on great examples today from second grade and from fourth grade of kids really, you know, engaging with their content, having a lot of choice and voice in what it is that they're learning, and having opportunities to display what they've learned in ways that they're excited about. So, our first two presenters are Lane Bridgga and Macy Schneidler. No, Macy Ingramm, I'm sorry, there's another. And Lane is going to talk to you about the Kahoot program. I'm not sure if you've ever heard about this, but Lane, do you want to kind of explain to them what Kahoot's all about?
When you do a Kahoot, like, sometimes you sort of learn about the topic and then write the questions and answers on paper, and then you take them to the Kahoot.
So, Kahoot is a way for kids to, and teachers, but in this case, it was second graders, who developed their own questions based on learning about their seed dispersal unit in science. So, they wrote the questions, and then each student in the second grade was given their own iPad, and so the students got to kind of have all of the kids in the second grade take their Kahoots that they wrote, so that they could kind of see how much they had learned. And Lane is going to show you how to do that with the one that she developed with. Okay. So, Kahoot's a great way for teachers as well, because, you know, as, if they're, if they're trying to just do a quick formative assessment with kids on content that, you know, has been covered in class, they can put one of these quick little Kahoots together. The kids love doing it. They're engaged, they're excited, and instantly, you know, as they answer the questions, the teachers get that feedback about, you know, how, how the students are mastering that content.
We need to put in a game number, and then put your names, put your first names in.
Okay, so do you have the PIN number, the game number yet?
Yeah.
So, on your Kahoot screens, you're going to have a field where you can type in a game number, and then most kids just kind of put their nickname. Okay, so there's your PIN number. And you'll see yourself join. Oh, there's always someone, there's an emoji. We say no silly names.
No, that was not you there!
Yeah.
Oh, I didn't overwrite the name that was on there. First fail.
Is that everyone? Everybody in? Everybody in?
I didn't overwrite it, thank you.
Are you ready?
I didn't overwrite it.
I didn't study.
Uh-oh. Seed dispersment.
So, now you need to tap the color on your screen that matches the answer that you think is the best answer. Nice job!
They're going to give my name, I think I failed that one.
Which seed is the easiest one to buy?
Oh, jeez.
Can you help us out?
No, no hints, no hints.
Call a friend, phone a friend?
Yeah. Oh, boy.
They're going to do a lot longer than they would, don't they?
Oh, do we get points for, do we get extra points for speed?
Yeah.
Oh, there we go. Now we know.
What seed does it buy?
I don't want to start. Fast ladies.
What seed does it buy?
Oh, I don't know. Would you people play with those little spinning things?
Ah!
I thought it was a dragon egg, it's a dragon egg!
Oh, fireproof?
Fireproof.
What seed does it buy?
This is awkward, I don't know.
What's the objection?
This is the pine trees.
This one.
And wood?
There we go, guess I win now. Oh, good job!
Well, this is like in our classroom. Well, this is interesting, because we taught seed dispersal, we gave the, the whole grade taught seed dispersal, and then we gave them all a choice between a diorama, a mural, or coming in and working on a Kahoot. So, there must have been at least 24 kids, because we ended up with like 12 Kahoots in the end. So, they came in, they had a graphic organizer that they had to fill out. They found that the questions were easier than coming up with answers that were, one was right and the other three were close but wrong. So, that was a big challenge. I found that hard to do as well. So, and then afterwards, they played and they practiced. But we use this for everything. We use this for math, we use this for ELA, we use this for a lot of different ways for the kids to practice. Sometimes they do it in teams, sometimes they do it alone. They do it alone, and you can collect the data and see how they did on the Kahoots individually. So, and some of the kids make them on their own, and, and then we use them in the classroom. And you can tell what's going on, because you just hear these loud cheers. Yes, it is. And there's a lot of laughing, and, yeah, especially, they're very competitive, it's kind of interesting. Like, they like those scores coming up there.
Paula, I have a question.
Yeah, we didn't set that one.
Do they have ready-made Kahoots? Like, are there some Kahoots that just, that they're in line with the curriculum?
There are probably well over 100,000 ready-made, so you can actually take them, duplicate them, edit them, and fix them, and make them to be exactly what you want.
And, and let's say an individual parent wanted to utilize Kahoot at home.
Yeah.
Is it an app? Is it...
It is both, isn't it? Yeah, it's web-based and an app on the iPhone.
Okay.
It's both. And I think an account is free. Yeah. Yeah, accounts are free.
Thank you. That's other.
Nice job.
Excellent job!
Excellent job, really! Really, really good job! So, amazing to show you is Paula did a lot of work in... Why don't you talk over here to please show it, okay? So they can hear you. An ELA this year with poetry and some of the other units you did. But we, we took advantage of green screen technology. So, we used this app called Do Ink, the Do Ink app, and it gives kids lots of great experience at all fluency. It gives them, they wrote their own scripts for, for... We did book reviews, so the children started at home with the book reviews. Macy, you want to talk about the book reviews? Tell them what we did. Go ahead, use your notes if you want to.
We did two green screens, and they were super fun. First was a book review, then poetry. We did book review, we chose books from home. Then we did a second survey to find out the top 10. We buddied with a friend who liked the same book. We did a buddy reread. Then we wrote the reviews. Then we practiced with each other. Then we put it together on the green screen. After that, we looked at the green screen tree, and I was like, do you see it? I am lying in the darkness with a smile upon my face, as I'm painting on my stomach which has gotten empty space. And a quarter of the kitchen with a piece of chocolate cake, I have got to get my hands on more empty stomachs. And my parents, all their sleeping, I can tell by father's smell. I will sneak out of my bedroom, I will tiptoe past the door. I will sneak into the kitchen, gathering wood and light. And if I am really careful, I will have a kitten rabbit. Hoo!
You guys have any questions for... This was interesting. When we did the book reviews, they brought books in from home, so they had choice in deciding, I wanted to see what they wanted to read. So, they did work. So, they brought books in from home, and then what we did was, we did a grade-wide survey to see what the top 10 books were in the grade, and then they came back to the class and they buddied up based on taste, and then they reread the stories and they wrote book reviews. And then, thank goodness, Mrs. Grant Chelly helped us do all the videoing, and the kids learned video, and they learned to put pictures in, and they learned to put together a green screen. And then later on, we did poetry, and they did a lot of practicing, videoing each other, and then for fluency and presentation, we did some poetry. So, it's, it's a nice tool, and I know they're using it in a lot of different grades, too. Yeah, let's go, good job! All right, my fourth grade friends, come on out. Thank you, Macy. Great job, Macy! Thank you. Everybody.
All right, while they're setting up, I'll just say, good evening. I'm Chris Nardone, I'm a fourth grade teacher over at Clyde Brown. So, I have two groups going tonight. The first one is really a project about data. I think you'll find it interesting, it's all about MCAS. It's all started with really their passion for learning about Google Forms and how to use them, and it really just kind of exploded into this much bigger project. But to be honest, I can't even believe fourth graders did. I think you'll be pretty impressed when you see the data they came up with. And then the other project is a passion project. It was a community-based project by Riley here, which was, in my time in teaching, you know, four or five years now, I haven't seen a student really take charge of a community-based project like this before. And she really has done an amazing job in the community, creating our care kits, and she'll tell you all about those. So, she used technology, creating posters, getting proposals passed, and all kinds of ways, she didn't even realize she was using it. But these girls use it with Google Sheets, with forms, proposals, emails, just a number of, a number of ways. So, without further ado, I'll leave it to that. The girls, go ahead.
Why did we do this? In our fourth grade class, we got interested in this technology, and we got a project for our child. The person we wanted to experience was in the group of our premium teacher survey. Our teacher survey was not because we still had some touch-ups being made to overcome. Our principal, Mr. Phelps, told us to take a little bit of that. In the fourth period of the teacher survey, we experienced a different way of doing this. Usually, we would take the MCAS test and then we would print it. This year, we took a computer-based test. Our principal wanted us to find out what students thought of the computer-based test. Project steps. First, we picked a topic we cared about. Then, we proposed the project to Mr. Phelps. Then, we learned about Google Forms. After, Ms. Grant Chelly had all the fourth graders take the survey for us. After, we reviewed the data in Google Sheets. Then, we sent the information to Mr. Nardone for review. Last, we sent, we sent to Mr. Phelps and fourth grade teachers. Big things we learned. Most students prefer the computer-based test over paper, and their eyes do not get tired because of this. Students could use a little more room while taking the test. Students, the answer eliminator tool is very useful. Most students used a mouse. Seventy-three percent of students have read the math and tests. Fifty-five percent said they had trouble with technology, that's more than half. Most students did not run out of space for open tests. Ten fifteen, it could hurt the time. Students prefer the math MCAS over ELA. Which tools were the most useful to students? Applying to the student data on both math and, and ELA MCAs, the answer eliminator was the most useful. We want to know students use the book tool and post them.
Want to tell them what they have scored, or what they can do?
So, we can skip problems when we're trying to do them.
Can you guys also tell me what the answer eliminator tool is? It seemed like everybody liked that. What was that?
Where you can eliminate questions, like the one that, and then like...
So, you had a multiple choice?
Yeah.
So, you can mark off ones that you know are wrong?
Yeah.
And just leave the ones? Got it.
Students, um, most students did not run out of space. We want to know students use the mouse to make the test. The majority of students did use the mouse to make it.
As opposed to the track pen, right?
Yeah. Do students have technical difficulties? Almost half the students in the grade had technical difficulties.
I want to jump in there, because I didn't want you to think it was really all that bad. Dave's behind the screen saying, "No, we went really well!" It did, it really did. It's just the initial login for that many students at one time. So, we learned from our mistake that we then staged the classrooms. We did one class, and then five minutes later, second class.
Another thing we spoke about is what are technical difficulties? They can be something different for every student. Maybe they click on an answer, and it takes a little too wild to go to the next question. So, that's one where we kind of spoke about, the data itself says something, but we need to kind of dig into it a little more, too.
Do students get a picture of their life? The majority of people did get a picture of their life. What time would be best for a break? Most people said 10:15. Were students comfortable in their workspace? Most students weren't comfortable in their workspace. Did their eyes get tired? Most people, um, their, their eyes did not get tired. Which test was the easiest to focus? Most students prefer the computer-based test or the fuzzy-based test? Either did the students prefer pencil and paper or a computer-based test? Most people preferred computer-based.
Jump there, watch there.
I have an opening for a director of technology. One thing about that survey that I, I really thought was terrific was, you know, as adults in the building, all the, you know, teachers and, you know, the director of technology, the principals, we were all quite anxious about this first go-round of digital MCAs. And for the kids, it was just not a big deal. Like, we worried for them, but they really had, they had very little issue to put it off. Hence the term "digital maid." I know.
So, this is Riley Sullivan, she's going to tell you all about her Riley Smiled care kits.
Hi. I'm Riley, and I decided to do this because when I went into the hospital, I, when I went to the emergency room, I went around two years ago. The staff gave me toys and I made a favorite. So, I decided to return to local hospitals and give care kits to people as good as I can. These are steps that I took to make this project. So, first, I had to talk to some of the adults in my life, like my parents and my teachers. So, first, I had to get the thumbs up, and a lot of the community, a lot of my teachers gave me support. And I decided back in due, she's the little teacher who's going up and places where it was around town was the best way to avoid it happening, like the blood pressure for me. And I requested permission from my principal, Mr. Phelps, to have it taken away. So, I could only do it with you, so... This is a picture of the posters that I found up around the school. My school helped me by letting me be able to put the posters around the school and the hallway, and they allowed me to join the activity during my announcements. And my teachers sent out an email after doing all the, uh, things about it. This is a picture of the March school year's life. So, then I got help from my community, and there was a wire search in the middle. First, my parents posted the flyer that I made, and then Miss Foby returned the recognition to turn it up at the town hall, set up a big box that you can easily make. And then, it was like all the media and a bunch of people starting knocking on the board and giving me boxes from the town hall. This is a picture of the donation box after the town hall. So, after I was done collecting, I'm still getting...
Good idea with the plug, keep going. I like it.
I'm still getting more donations right now, and, well, once I was in collect home in school, there was a, I made my classmates to help me organize the donations. So, we all made these groups of tables, and we put a bunch of hearts and caps on them. So, Ms. Nardone, Ms. Casey, and my mom said... Most students prefer the computer-based test over paper, and they're as sure not to get tired because of this. Students could use a little more room while taking the tests. Students, the answer eliminator tool is very useful. Most students used a mouse. Seventy-three percent of students covered the math and tests. Fifty-five percent said they had trouble with technology. That's more than half of them. Most students did not run out of space for open tests. Ten fifteen would be hard to find. Students prefer the math ampas over ELA. Which tools were the most useful to students? A plan to review data on both math and ELA ampas, the answer eliminator tool was the most useful. We want to know students used the book control in post-game.
Want to tell them what they have to score with?
So we can skip problems when we're trying to do them.
Can you guys also tell me what the answer eliminator tool is? It seemed like everybody liked that. What was that?
Where you can eliminate questions, like the ones that are in the right.
To read a multiple choice.
So you can mark off ones that you know are wrong and just leave the ones? Got it.
Students, most students did not run out of space. We want to know students used the mouse to make the test. The majority of students did use the mouse to make the test.
As opposed to the track pen, right?
Do students have technical difficulties? Almost half the students in the grade had technical difficulties.
I want to jump in there because I didn't want you to think it was really all that bad. Dave's behind the screen saying, "No, we went really well." It did, it really did. It's just the initial login for that many students at one time. So we learned from our mistake that we then staged the classrooms. We did one class and then five minutes later, second class.
Another thing we spoke about is what are technical difficulties? They can be something different for every student. Maybe they click on an answer and it takes a little too wild to go to the next question. So, that's one where we kind of spoke about the data itself says something, but we need to kind of dig into it a little more, too.
Do students get a picture of their life? Is our drawing a picture of a deep black picture? What time would be best for break? Most people said ten fifteen. Were students comfortable in their workspace? Most students weren't comfortable in their workspace. Did their eyes get tired? Most people, their eyes did not get tired. Which test was the most difficult to study? Most students preferred the computer-based test or the fuzzy-based test. Do students prefer pencil and paper or a computer-based test? Most people preferred computer-based.
I have an opening for a director of technology. One thing about that survey that I really thought was terrific was, you know, as adults in the building, all the teachers and, you know, the director of technology, the principals, we were all quite anxious about this first go-round of digital ampas. And for the kids, it was just not a big deal. Like, we worried for them, but they really had a very real issue to put it off. Hence the term "digital maid."
This is Riley Sullivan. She's going to tell you all about her Riley Smiled care kits.
I'm Riley, and I decided to do this because when I went into the hospital, when I went to the emergency room, when I broke my arm two years ago, the staff gave me toys and I made a fever head. So I decided to return to local hospitals and give care kits to people as good as I can. These are steps that I took to make this project. So first, I had to talk to some of the adults in my life, like my parents and my teachers. So first, I had to get the thumbs up. And a lot of the community, a lot of my teachers gave me support. And I decided back in the research, the little children's school, other places around town was the best way to try to do what happened, like the blood work for me. And I requested permission from my principal, Mr. Phelps, to have it taken away. I could only do it with me, so. This is a picture of the posters that I found around the school. My school helped me by letting me to put the posters around the school and the hallway. And they allowed me to join the march during my announcements. And my teachers sent out an email after doing all the things about it. This is a picture of the March school year's life. So then I got help from my community, and there was a wire search in the middle. First, my parents posted the flyer that I made. And then Ms. Grinchelli turned the information to the chairman at the town hall, set up a big box that you can easily make. And then it was like all the media and a bunch of people starting knocking on the door and giving me boxes from the town hall. This is a picture of the donation box at the town hall. So after I was done collecting, I was still getting.
Good idea with the plug. Keep going.
I'm still getting more donations right now. And, well, once I was done collecting in school, I made my classmates to help me organize the donations. So we all made these groups of tables and put a bunch of hearts and caps on them. So Mr. Nardone, Miss Casey, and my mom set up different stations with a type of items. And then my classmates and I went around the stations and filled up the hundred bags. We popped them out. And these are some pictures of us with the bags together. So then I decided to deliver them to the nearest hospital where my neighbor works. It was my sister. It says my sister's name. It was my friend Lauren who took away my money. And we delivered them to the local hospital and brought them to the emergency department. And my neighbor, when she gave away his gift, she said that was kind of a very happy.
So thank you to Mr. Phelps, Ms. Grinchelli, and Mrs. Phelps, for supporting all of us and these great students. So, thank you so much for really.
And if we want to deliver, if anybody at home wants to donate, I should say. If anybody at home wants to donate.
It's like a bunch of toys that we give them, to take their mind off it.
Yep.
So we put some toy cars in here, coloring books, and some things to make stuff out of inside of this. And my dad came up with a logo on the front of it.
So Riley, if there are people at home that, so sometimes people watch us on TV. So, yeah, some people, don't worry. So if some people might want to give some donations of things in case you want to make other kits. So are there ways that they can still donate? Can they give it to you, does it to the school, or you?
We're not doing it through the school anymore. So we don't really know how it's supposed to get from them right now.
Okay. Well, I'm sure, you got your parenting?
Yes.
I'm just going to say for her.
Yeah.
If you reach out to my email, cnrdone@nospds.org, I will get in contact with Mrs. Sullivan. So is there another way? You want to say?
I also am on social media and stuff like that.
Christine Sullivan is Riley's mom. So we'll make sure that Riley has to get her cheer bits. Thanks, Riley.
Great job, guys.
Thank you so much.
So, my name is Sarah Alhaza. I teach fourth grade also. I have two students here today, Jalen Ponroy and Logan Manning, who are going to show you Project Face Learning Experience, what they did as Amisa and Richmond in fourth grade this year. And then also, Declan Ryan and Brayden Day, who will show you something they did for Genius Hour. So, they'll explain it all. Do you want to go first?
Next.
Yeah, since you have.
Why step out of your way? Would you want to show them?
So for my project, we did a monthly project, like a small math group. And in the month of October, we had to, you had to choose four different places that you could go on a field trip and write about, like, how long it would take to get there and the cost of it. And then you got to choose one of your favorites. And so then you created, you could create anything you wanted to show how you did it. So I created a poster board and I showed the place that we would look out, which is Benway Park, the total cost, and the letter, the persuasive letter we had to write to Mr. Phelps about why we should go there. And you could choose anything you want, and we actually went on that trip.
Yeah, so it kind of got away from itself. So she came up with a really convincing persuasive letter that connected Benway Park to our, like, how we study national landmarks in the United States in social studies. So that connection kind of led us to Mr. Nardone and I talking and saying, "Hey, can we really do this?" So then we were like, "Shilin, can we really do this?" So she went home, actually. And do you want to show what you did for us?
And then I, and then Mr. Nardone, he called this phone number that would give you a school discount. And so it was actually, it ended up being a little bit cheaper. So it was $12 for kids and $15 for adults. And so then I just did the math and I showed Ms. Alhaza and Mr. Nardone.
And she even wrote us a letter about, you know, the breakdown and what the plan would be. Even gave us the phone number to call. So essentially, her Project Face Learning Experience, she did a lot of our jobs that we normally do on a regular basis. She integrated a lot of, you know, strategies and skills like research and a lot of math and even added in a little ELA with her persuasive writing.
Great job.
So Logan did the same exact project, but since they had choice in how they would present it, he decided to go a different route.
I did my presentation on Blue Observatory. And the purpose of the project was to come up with four different places to take your class on a field trip. And then you pick one out of the four and you research it. I had to research admission costs for the kids and adults that were going on the field trip. And I had to research, like, the gas cost while you're taking the bus and if you have to bring a bag for lunch because they might not serve food there. I got to choose whatever field trip I wanted to. And I got to choose how I presented my project, either in the form of a poster or a slideshow or anything like that. This all relates to real life because teachers have to think about where kids might want to go for a field trip. And they need to make sure that it's at an affordable price and that the kids will actually learn something out of the entire experience. I don't know what I have to say.
And one thing I want to add that he did, and I thought this was really cool, is he decided to show his information with a bar graph, which he didn't even have. But I thought it really showed, like, the different options. And he visually showed the class and Mr. Phelps and other administrators who were there how cost-effective Blue Hills, which I recommended to third grade because they do.
Logan, was this a spreadsheet? Did you put a spreadsheet together to him? And Logan, did you guys have to present? Did they present to the administrator, the administrative team?
Yep, Dr. Marx was there that day and Mr. Phelps. And I believe those two were there. They were able to.
How did you get to present on that day? Because the projector.
Oh, the ball blew. The ball blew. The projector. But he did present to the class, yeah.
Great job, Logan.
All right, so this is switching gears a little bit. But they, Declan and Brayden, for Genius Hour, which I run in my classroom once a week, they decided to research how to code a video game using Scratch. So they're just going to show what they did.
It's pretty amazing how self-directed they become.
Genius Hour is a project where you have a question on what you want to do. And you have to pursue that question and do a project. Genius Hour begins with a question. And then you, my question was, how do you make a game or website? And in the end, the product is. The product is based on your question. So the choice part is your question and it can be any. The book said there were only one with the witch and one ghost. But it was too easy, so we made three ghosts. And then I had a helicopter to take away the ghosts.
Can we make a couple screens, guys? So what are you moving right now to play? You supposed to try and catch the ghost?
Yes.
With the helicopter?
No, you're the witch.
Oh, you're the witch flying around, okay. She's hard to see. We're old over here, we can't see that far. These fourth graders, they built those two, they built two variables up in the top corner. Yeah, score and time. And then they had to figure out how to add and subtract to them in their loops. So that day, it was awesome.
And what was really cool that they did is, like they said, is this, through those books, the traditional game, I believe, is they're just catching the ghosts for one point. But like they said, that seemed a little too easy for kids. So they. So they minimized them and they added a deduction. And the kids had a lot playing it. So their product was, they shared it with the class and they have it up on their Scratch for children who are.
That is great. Do you know your high score?
I think it's like 21.
I don't know. That's pretty good. Oh, come on, beat it, beat it. No pressure.
Thank you, guys.
Wonderful. Thank you. Thank you very much. Lots of great stuff going on.
Hi, I'm April Hodge. I teach fifth grade. And this past school year, we read the book Wonder in ELA as a read aloud. And we planned on going on a field trip in April to go and see the movie. And we got word, I think maybe January, February, that the movie had gotten pushed into November. We were not able to go and see it this school year. So we had kind of a bummed-out day when we found out and decided, hey, we can't see the movie. So we make the movie. So we went through the entire filmmaking process. And we had such a fantastic time doing it. So we read the book. And here's some of the activities that we were able to do with it. We read the follow-up book, Augie and Me, which gives a different perspective on the same story. We read a news article about a real-life girl living in England who has the same problem as the boy in the book, which is a facial deformity. We talked about the themes of kindness, tolerance, differences, family, popularity, and courage. And one thing that kind of kept coming up throughout this school year was this precept from the story called, "When Given the Choice Between Being Right or Being Kind, Choose Kind." Jen, do you want to talk about some of the jobs we have?
Sure. The jobs that we did were, so we had the director who put all of it together. We had the choreographer, that was me, who, like, made everybody where they're supposed to go and positioned and walk and stuff like that. We had the set designers that, when we filmed, there was a place that we were supposed to go. And they either, like, made the props as a prop designer or, like, made a drop back or something like that. And then the prop designers, like Beckett has, like, his hair and his costume.
Which she'll explain in a bit.
Yeah. And that would help out with the movie, so it was just, like, not flanking or anything like that. And we also had, we had the actors also for the movie.
So what we did as a class is we made a storyboard of all the important scenes of the movie. And the script writers got to work writing the script, which ended up being about a 21-page document that the whole class kind of did a joint effort on Google Docs. We worked on it for quite a while. And then we got to filming. All right, so do you want to talk a little bit about filming?
Sure. So, like, it was a long process filming this. Oh, no, okay.
You can talk about who you were.
Yeah, so I was going to make a character in the movie. A lot of scenes of that, like, I'm pretty much in every scene in the whole movie. But like, I was Beckett, who was one of the more funny characters in the movie. It kind of, like, made the movie better. It was like, yeah.
So I think maybe it's a kind of a serious book, but there's this definite edge of comedy to it. So each student had a role. They wrote out a resume, they had to audition. It was fantastic. So this is an example of the resume they had to fill out. They had to do everything from the grades they've completed in school up through fourth grade, what position they wanted to have, volunteer and work experience they've had, skills that they had, which actually was, you know, their way of voicing the choice in what they did in making this. And that led them to different positions. This was the day we wrapped filming. So a class of 21, and I have to say the engagement was phenomenal. So Beckett, would you like to talk about your character and what it was like to be this character?
I was the party nurse. And it was fun because I got to hang out, like, for a whole school day in a random costume and everything. Why are you wearing that? I've answered this question more than 15 times. Because I'm filming a movie.
It was a lot of fun to take an entire ELA class on location. We were in the auditorium, we were outside, we went all over the school. And our film ended up being almost 13 minutes long. And as they now know, the making of a movie, we now know why the real movie was delayed. It takes a really long time to get everything together. And we're going to play just the opening scene for you, so you can get a sense of what our movie is like.
I know I'm not an ordinary 10-year-old kid. I mean, I do ordinary things. I eat ice cream, I ride my bike, I play ball, I have an Xbox. Stuff like that makes me ordinary, I guess. I don't feel ordinary inside. But I know ordinary kids don't make ordinary kids run away screaming in playgrounds. I know that ordinary kids don't get scared out wherever they go. If I found a magic wand and I had one wish, I wish I had normal face that no one noticed at all. When Augie was born, he had a facial deformity. But what's funny about that day was, it actually would not stop 10 years into the future.
So the movie goes on then to showing Augie in fifth grade and finally going to public school for the first time and all the challenges that come along with that. Absolutely.
So I was a choreographer. And I also played the role of Charlotte, who introduced Augie and showed him around the school.
But I was Augie and I just did that voiceover right there.
I was Amos and party nurse.
I'm just going to pull up the credits so you can see everyone that played a role in this.
So what did you guys learn most from this? Sorry, I interrupted. What do you think you learned? What was your big takeaway from doing this project?
I think the big takeaway that we probably learned in this project was that in the book, it showed us a lot of, like, lessons that we learned to not, like, judge people for who they are. And also, like, doing a humongous project where there's a lot of steps to it and it just, you learn a lot.
Just to keep going, like, not give up. Or on a project that takes a lot of work, just keep trying, don't give up.
What he said.
Spencer, I was the filmer and I played the role of Nate, Augie's dad, and Eddie, the seventh grade boy.
I am from Thailand. I was the director and I played the role of Miss Bell.
I'm Beckett.
I'm Beckett, I played Amos and the farting nurse and I was the assistant director.
I am Samon Clay, I was a script writer and I also played Julian.
Hi, my name is Jonathan, I was, I was location expert and I was the role of Mr. Dush.
Hi, I'm Dave, I played location expert.
Hi, I'm Rudy, I'm a rock expert.
Hi, I'm John, I was the, um. Come here, Mr. Brown.
Hi, I'm Andrew, I was the script writer and I went on first on the audience.
Hi, I'm Alex, I play Justin and, um, no, more expert, more expert.
Hello, I'm Francis Hart, AKA Francis P. Washington. Um, and I was sound editor.
And narrator.
And the narrator.
Hi, I'm Jen, I was the choreographer and I played as the seventh grader who screamed and, um, Charlotte.
I'm Lea Man and I was the researcher.
I'm Chris Colari and I was also a researcher.
Hi, I'm Scarlett.
I'm Kristen and you were the casting lead.
Hi, I'm Jaycee and I was the casting agent.
Hi, I'm Angelina and I was the casting agent and I also played Summer.
I am Jack, I was center-sender and I also played Jack Wilk.
Hi, I'm Maurice, I was the editor and I also played Arnold.
Thank you, guys. That was great.
Wonderful. Well, that was a wonderful display of project-based personalized learning. Thank you all very much. So we also, um, this evening have a presentation by the CPAC, our special education advisory council.
I'm Roger Noonan, I am co-chair of the Milis CPAC. And Kelsey Gwynn was going to be with me today, but we were gonna be first on the agenda last week and I guess we are official leaders, so she has to leave.
Oh, sorry.
So, so Melissa Lo is our secretary, who's also on the board, so he is helping up with me also. We're just gonna review a little bit about what CPAC did this year. Um, for anybody that doesn't know CPAC, the Special Education Parent Advisory Committee. Um, we had our first, we had an open house this year. Um, and we had a safety presentation in cooperation with the Milis Police Department. Um, we were very appreciative of them coming in to present to parents. Um, we did, uh, they did teaching on community preparedness and registration with the town for children with disabilities. Um, as all, also about ways to teach children not to be fearful with local authorities. We also did a rights and responsibilities presentation at that time for parents. Um, and Dr. Marks was very helpful in all of these things. We had Jessica Minahan, um, came, uh, to speak on managing anxiety. That was fantastic presentation, parents really, uh, received it well. Friends of Milis CPAC was developed this year. To do some fundraising, we had a bake sale, um, which we're gonna use those proceeds for welcome packets at the open house next year. And, uh, we had a meeting this past week to address some parental concerns that have been brought to CPAC about, um, BCBA services and, um, some compliance issues with BCBA services overall. I know Phil has been getting together some statistics on that. Um, and, um, Dr. Marks has been meeting with us about that as well. And Dr. Marks and Nancy have graciously agreed to meet with some parents about that issue, which is still a little bit ongoing. So coming up for next year, we have an open house, hopefully planned for September twentieth. We're waiting for the calendar to make that happen. Uh, we have a placement fire meet and greet, um, on October fourteenth at ten AM. Um, we don't know if that's gonna be at the fire station or police station. We have requested funding for a MasPAC membership, um, which would allow us to have one free presentation to parents and also, um, another one at fifty percent off to parents, um, which we will fundraise for the remainder of. We plan to work with the art teachers, Dr. Marks is also gonna help us with this. We wanted to develop a contest for each school, for the students to design an overall CPAC logo and a logo for each of the schools, so that, we actually put together, um, or are working on a WordPress website for CPAC. And, um, we wanna do like a resource list, so we were thinking that if we had the logos, then each parent would know what's applicable to them. And then we have, um, uh, board planning, I'm going for the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen school year. We're considering ideas for a presentation on executive functioning. Um, we understand that there's, um, some ASD, a lot of ASD kids, I guess, coming in in the lower levels, and that would be a really applicable presentation. Um, we wanna do a bullying presentation, uh, transition planning, uh, movie night, a possible scavenger hunt.
I didn't come prepared to make comments, uh, Dr. Kelsey's gonna be here, but I'm sure you're all wondering, what were those statistics from the, you know, service logs that we found? Um, and it was a really small sample size, but what we found was, um, as the, um, was the compliance on the BCBA services for the parents that submitted their logs to me was somewhere around fifty-six percent, the range from fifty-six percent to seventy-five percent. That's on, you know, a small sample, but all of those, um, logs showed, you know, sort of pretty significant, um, non-compliance to what the school was supposed to provide for our children. I think that is, uh, I wouldn't, I, I, I don't know enough, I don't say it's a direct result, but I would say it's the, um, the cutting of the BCBA in the last budget probably played a big role in that. I think we're just now trying to understand, well, what would be the implication if, you know, more parents had such significant under compliance with their logs and, and really as a group educating ourselves, well, what would our next steps be? As parents who all want best for our children, what exactly could we do as parents to make sure that our, our children receive the, 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 um, the services that they're rightfully entitled to? Um, it's concerning in, in a big way. And it's gonna be a topic of our, um, you know, our, our organization over the coming year. So I'm sure you'll see me more and hear more about, um, that.
We were thinking in terms of, um, the differences to, for parents for that from an individual perspective, where we, you know, encourage them to speak with Dr. Marks, versus as a community perspective and concern around, like, if those numbers are there, like will parents request compensatory services and what will that do with budget and things like that? So it's always looking at it in two perspectives, because you have the community perspective as CPAC and then you have the individual parent perspective. So we tried to, you know, kind of separate those things out when we were doing education about this issue. And also in talking with Dr. Marks and, and again, like I said, Dr. Marks and Nancy have agreed to sit down with parents and I think they've been very good about it. And we're just looking to try and help that along, so that we can maybe stop a problem before it becomes a bigger problem. Any questions?
I have a question. Did you mention you were requesting funding for the MasPAC?
Correct.
Who were you requesting funding?
Um, we, we had talked to Dr. Marks about that. In a, a meeting, actually, only like about two days ago. And, um, and I know that there's different levels of MasPAC funding, so I think that that's probably a little bit of an ongoing conversation. And we were going to have a, a conversation, we were working on scheduling a meeting for just before the school year, so that we could kind of figure out where that stood.
I think, I'll just add, I think it's important, um, I don't think our town has consistently had a strong CPAC, not at least since I've been here and involved in special education.
Can I tell you that I think this is the first actual formal presentation, maybe second, in my seven years sitting at the state.
We have a really steep line in front of us to make it as successful and it won't be really successful in, you know, six months or one year. Uh, but the services that the MasPAC offers will really help us understand, what are the things that our CPAC can do to work, um, really well, not only with the parents, but also the school district, to make sure we have a really strong organization.
We did have quite a few newer parents at our most recent CPAC meeting, which was helpful to us because we kind of know where the learning curve is. Some of us have been in the system for a little longer, I have a middle schooler and he also a middle schooler.
No.
And, uh, and so it's different, it's very different if you're entering the system versus you've gone through the IDP process, so we have lots of really good ideas, we're just trying to.
Thank you, thank you very much, thank you for sharing that with us, thank you. Any questions?
No, we're super happy.
Thank you. We're with the chairman's report. The only item that I had was just a comment about, uh, subcommittees. So next week on the twenty-ninth, we'll be having a working session discussion to talk about strategic planning for the upcoming year slash years. As, as part of that, I'm just asking the committee to, um, keep in mind, we have a very long list of subcommittees that we have today. And one of the items that I'll put on for next week's agenda, for, for some consideration brief, because it's less impactful, like we'd say the larger discussion on strategic planning. But I would like us to take a look at trying to streamline those subcommittees and have a list of sort of prioritized ones and ones that we need to have. Right now, we don't have a lot of activity across them and we have kind of a long list and a lot that don't have any activity. So if there's a way for us to cut that list down and, um, see if there are items that fall under the purview of some of those subcommittees, that we as a committee determine to be priority for next year, then we approach it from that perspective. That's the only thing that, that I have there. Subcommittee reports, elementary school building committee? Just kind of.
There's a elementary school building committee meeting tomorrow night, seven PM, at Town Hall. And the working group commences again next Wednesday. It's unclear if it's going to be every other week or every week, but, um, there's also the process of, um, finding the construction manager at risk. I believe the decision will be made on July seventh. We've already done a preview, they've requested proposals and we will bring people in for an interview. There are four companies coming in on the seventh for a marathon session of like a five-hour thing, and then we will pick a construction manager at risk and then we start moving ahead. So, um, no real rest for the weary, we're getting right back into it now that, now the real work begins.
Thank you. Um, the only thing that I will add is, a lot of people have been asking as a follow-on to the positive vote, uh, at town meeting, when the expectation is to break ground. So right now, it's anywhere in the range of November through spring, based off of the type of winter that we get and how quickly we can get the construction manager at risk on board and moving along. So there's been a lot of pre-planning. We were fortunate in that the project team kept working, uh, with the hopes that we would have a positive result at town meeting to try and not lose any ground. So that team that's been working on the construction manager at risk selection has kept that project moving to kind of keep it, keep on pace.
Sure.
So we'll keep everybody updated as we learn more about that.
Correspondence, I didn't make copies, because there were several, and I believe you all get them in Milis Midway News at home, but we have great articles in there about the wonderful, um, experience that the, um, Milis DI had with several teams going to the globals and I think three teams, correct? Every teams went to globals and competed and did very well and had a fabulous time. There's, um, an article on our, um, Special Olympians and the five-town Special Olympics that we hold. The girls' track team with our coach Laura Connor, who used to be our art teacher and became a full-time art teacher in a neighboring community and still stays very involved with our, our girls' track and has done a fabulous job. Jack Moriarty as catcher of the baseball team, celebrating Arbor Day at Clyde Brown. The Milis Leos, um, well, the Milis Lions have honored Leo, which is our club, um, high school club. Ally Smith as Massachusetts Leo of the Year. And Ally's just a fabulous, fabulous student and great person, so there's a nice article in there. Mohawk Pride held its third annual three-by-three tournament and a comedy night as fundraisers. There's, Milis High School has been recognized nationally. We had announced this earning a silver medal in the latest rankings of America's Best High Schools by U.S. News and World Report. And, um, the, uh, a great article on the boys' volleyball team that had an excellent, excellent year and went to tournaments. So a lot of wonderful, um, things happening and we appreciate that the, the Milis Midway News covers those, those things. And then lastly, we've included in your packet the, um, letter that Jen Sewell and I worked on and have sent to Needham Bank. And, um, we're, um, reaching out again, uh, to see if, if there's any response, hopefully within a week or two.
Excellent. Questions on the correspondence? Do you have any school committee announcements?
Carrie?
Madam Chair, I've been here like Mark for seven years and I would tell you, today, the day after school ends, was one of the best meetings I had, because with all due respect to the administrators that worked very hard and the teachers, to see teachers and students so excited with absolute, well, I'm gonna date myself, we did not learn that way. And to see it firsthand and to see them excited, I, that was a great, great experience for us. And I would, as we go into our strategic planning session, I would encourage, a, a couple times a year for that exact, I, I love that, that was awesome. So thank you for, for facilitating that learning and thank you to the administrators for, for encouraging that and that was an awesome, awesome experience. And it is the day after school ends, so I didn't think they were, thought they were gonna be here. And I'm glad that Ms. Conroy picked Fenway Park and not Yankee Stadium. I was going to embarrass her, but I chose not to. She picked the right, she picked the right park.
She wore her Yankee shirt to Fenway.
We're gonna break her of that.
Because we were at Yankee Stadium.
I know, I know. But thank you for that, that was, that was really very cool.
All right. Uh, we don't have any old business or new business? Would you?
Well, we're, we're gonna do it in working sessions.
So we will adjourn to working session, not to return to open session. Uh, we'll follow the working session with an executive session, uh, to discuss some contract items and, uh, we'll take the motion. We don't go to working?
Do we have to, do we need a motion going to executive?
We'll do it working. Okay, all right. So, um, I wish everybody a happy summer. We will continue to meet. There's a session posted for next week, we'll be in working session talking about some strategic planning items, uh, and we'll continue to post meetings there. So we wish everybody a happy, safe, um, continued learning summer. Thank you very much.